Good evening. I'm calling to order the town of Cordermadera Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 22nd. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf, the roll, please.
Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we open it up to public comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you want to say to us or the town, please do so. You have three minutes, but it can't be on the agenda. Seeing that nobody's jumping up, we will say that the public comment has been opened and closed, and we'll move right on to our continued hearing, since we have nothing on the consent calendar. So tonight, we are continuing the hearing for subtitled Signs at the Village of Cordermadera, 1618 Redwood Highway, Continued Public Hearing from January 8th, 2019, for a Design Review, Precise Plan Amendment, and Sign Permit Application Regarding Exterior Paint Colors, including Highway Facing Elevations for the Village of Cordermadera, and Revisions to the Precise Plan Number 12001 for Highway Oriented Tenant Signs and the Monument Sign at 168 Redwood Highway. So I'll let Mr. Boyle take it from here and give us some background. But before we do that, I just want to check in with the commissioners as to any communication that you've had outside of this meeting or the public record that you would like to disclose. Phyllis, anything?
The emails I sent and received are in the packet.
All right. Great. Dr. Bundy.
No.
All right. Ms. Bendel.
Mr. Hoffman contacted me, and I spoke with him on the telephone about the signage and his ideas for -- I'm sorry. And his ideas for signage, and I took contemporaneous notes as we spoke if anybody needs to see what we talked about.
All right. Did you disclose anything to Mr. Hoffman?
I did not. I didn't give him my opinion, except that I thought we could reach a good compromise.
Okay. Mr. Lee.
No, I've not had any outside contact. That's not part of the public record.
All right. So, and my public record has been forwarded. So there we have it. That said, Mr. Boyle, please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, this is a continuation of the public hearing from January 8th. I did want to bring attention to the packet at your places, and it's also in the back for the public to review. These are emails that were received after the packet was distributed on February 18th -- I'm sorry, January 18th, Friday, the 18th. And as I mentioned earlier, the first two emails, first two correspondents came later this afternoon. All the other correspondences were emailed to the planning commissioners early this morning. So those packets, that packet is there, and certainly if you have any questions regarding some of the issues that were raised, I can address those. In this, another difference in the staff report is that I have included two resolutions as opposed to just one previously. I've given you, if the commission chooses to make a decision this evening, I've given you a draft approval resolution and also a draft denial resolution. So your options are to approve one of the two resolutions or continue the public hearing for additional deliberation. As Chairman Chase mentioned, the documentation that he had received prior to the January 8th meeting is in your packet. I've had correspondence and communications with the applicant since the January 8th meeting, and they are not proposing any changes to their application. So there's no additional information for me to provide to you. I have the PowerPoint from last time that I could run through again, or we can go straight to the applicant's presentation if you wish to hear that. Again, obviously, before that, I can answer any questions that you have. And a recommendation is the same from before, that you deliberate and take all public comment and information and give staff direction on how you want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes my report unless Adam has anything to add.
No.
Okay.
Did you have additional slides?
I don't have any. No, the applicant has a couple of additional slides, but I don't know.
And I think, I guess the one thing I will add is just to rehash where we left things at the last meeting, which was, there was a straw vote that the commissioners took on the colors and of the, that were proposed to be changed of the buildings, and the commissioners seemed to be in favor of that, but obviously continued the meeting based on the discussion over the signs. And I'm not sure if you have any comments on that aspect. We did not separate out the matters into two separate resolutions, but maybe, Phil, you can add to that if reason for that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just briefly, at the end of last meeting, there was a discussion, maybe an option that we would explore, breaking up the application into the building colors as one resolution and the signs as another resolution. But in talking to the applicant and in talking further, Adam and I, we decided it would be cleaner and easier just to keep it all together. So this is, this is one application for building colors and signs. If the commission, for whatever reason, feels very strongly about separating those, we can talk about that, but we did not separate them for you for tonight at this point.
Right. It would seem, and let me just ask this since it's brought up, that if it were to be considered in two elements, that that would actually have to go back to the applicant to decide whether to do that or not. Is that fair?
Yes. Yeah, and maybe the applicant, but in my conversations with the applicant, they didn't see any need to separate them.
Just wanted clarity on that. And I think for the, even though it's almost the same public here, I think a quick review of the slides would be important, and I do have a question regarding signage that exists out there. And that while we had called out a certain type of lettering, the Verizon sign that's there is outside of that typical approved signage. So it got installed separate or somehow not following the guidelines that we had laid forth originally.
Yes, that's correct.
So, okay, just confirming that somehow it's there. And there are no signs directly from the west at the center showing, say, for instance, that two sides of a 45 or the 90-degree signs are visible. Right? So nothing directly at that elevation.
Right. Like, yeah, you're saying there's no location where there are two signs next to each other?
There's no photo of, yeah, there's no photo in the record of being able to see the two signs as you can if you are at the village, at the town center, or if you're driving up the freeway, you see two signs at one time. So there.
Okay.
That's sort of what you see, yeah.
Gotcha. Right.
Okay.
On the right.
That's a representation by the architect. Okay. Or somebody. So, okay. If you would quickly just recapture the slide program, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Absolutely. So starting from the beginning, application, of course, for the freeway signs and the building colors. Project location is the Village of Cordermadera, and the exterior paint colors that they're proposing are shown here. They also provided color samples as well as paint colors facing the west. They're also proposing to paint portions of the interior of the building or the building that faces the parking lot to the east, and those images are shown here. And again, this is all in the packet from January 8th. And then jumping to the freeway signs themselves, I gave a brief history of how the signs came to be, originally proposed in 2012, and that was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and those minutes were in your January 8th packet. In 2013, they, there were some, prior to 2013, the end of 2012, there were some signs installed that did not meet the guidelines or did not meet the intent of the guidelines, the feeling of, that was the feeling of staff and the Planning Commission. The applicant came before the Planning Commission and asked for additional signs, basically a greater variety of signs. They asked for different fonts and expand the requirements for the sign program. And the town actually kind of went the opposite direction and narrowed the scope and provided greater clarity on what was required for signs facing the freeway, and that was that each individual channel letters were required, they were to be illuminated, there were specific colors required for the signs during the day and during the night. And during the day, the color shall be similar to the one on the right, should be similar to the body of the building. And in the evening, all signs shall be white illuminated. There was a maximum letter height, and there was a picture that said, "All signs shall have a font very similar to the graphic that was shown in the 2013 resolution," and then that all letters shall be in capitals. So that's what transpired in 2013. And then really not, nothing significant has changed since 2013 regarding the freeway sign regulations, and they have been incorporated into the tenant design guidelines, which the village hands out to their tenants. And coming now to our application today is to modify those requirements and to expand the use of colors, the use of logos, and the use of various fonts. And in the applicant's packet, they show exactly how the sign criteria would change, again, adding individual letters and logos, and then also talking about various types of fonts and colors, temperature in terms of Kelvin, and also the logo size and the letter height again. So those are in the criteria. Again, the freeway monument sign is proposed to be repainted. I was incorrect last time when I mentioned that they wanted some flexibility in how these signs will be presented in terms of, example, Macy's and Nordstrom's, those will remain the same according to the applicant. So the only change to the monument sign will be the repainting of the body and the frame around those signs. And again, just some examples of the neighbor across the way to the west of the town center. And that concludes my report.
Yeah. And I think, again, just summarizing, you know, the purpose, as stated by the applicant, but also as expressed at the last meeting, was obviously to improve the signage program and the visibility of some of the signs facing the highway and to, you know, sort of recognizing the fact that the signage program in the intervening five years since it's been put in place, according to the applicant, has not been effective or adequate in sort of indicating to consumers, potential consumers, that what stores are at the center. And that's, you know, sort of the counter, trying to counteract the sort of the architectural orientation that was originally, and the way that that center was originally constructed. So just leave you with that.
Okay. Thank you. Before I go to the other commissioners, I think that we would all benefit from a brief explanation of the sign ordinance as it is presented by, in the correspondence from Jenna Hale, titled Signs in the C2 Regional Shopping Center, talks about a master sign program and then specifically the design review process. And she's made a couple of comments in this, and I think it's important to address, and one of them being that the issue of the master sign program and zoning signage requirements take precedence over master design sign F over master sign program, and then the comment that none of the proposed signs are in elevations providing primary access. So those are the three things she's got there, and I think that they're important for us to look at, not only in this case, other cases, but particularly applicable here. And I'd like to hear from staff as to how this is addressed.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Hale's comments. And starting from the first email, which is most recently provided, C talks about, she shows, she lists the C2 Regional Shopping Center section of the zoning code. And the very first sentence in that section, again, the section is 18.22.110, it says, "Directing to staff, refer to approved master sign programs for the town center and the village for specific sign regulations applying to these shopping centers. In the event that those regulations do not address particular sign applications, the following underlying regulations shall apply." And so Adam and I talked about this this afternoon, and the understanding is that the town recognizes and requires the town center and the village to have master sign programs, which they have. And if, for some reason, in those master sign programs, the applicant chooses to leave something out, example, at the very end, E says, "Signs shall be located on a building elevation provided, providing access and lease by a tenant." So for some reason, the master sign program is created, and it doesn't say anything about the location of the sign, which would be kind of odd, but if that's what happened, then staff and the decision-makers would go to E and says, "Okay, all signs have to be at this location." The, this sign program that we're addressing right now clearly says, "These signs shall be located facing the freeway." So that's one example. And so, and at the very bottom is Ms. Hale's comments, "The backsides of these stores do not provide access." That's completely true. But I think the first sentence says, "The sign, you know, sign program can be flexible in that regard."
Right. Okay.
Go ahead.
Phyllis?
As long as we're pulling things out of these ordinances, I'll refer you to the fourth one that she submitted, your last page.
Is it okay if I just go through all? I was going to go through all of her pages very briefly, but we can jump ahead if you want.
Well, I would like, I think what I'm going to say contradicts what you just said, and I think we should keep it together.
Sure.
18.22.020, sign permit and design review required.
Okay.
C.
Page two of this.
That's the next section.
Page two. Well, I may have put them in different order when I printed them out, whatever it is.
Okay.
It's this one?
He hasn't gotten to that one yet, but.
Okay. All right. But I'm referring it to what he just said. He said about the master plan taking precedence over the ordinance, if there's a master plan. Yet here it says, under C, "For every site on which a master sign program has been adopted, the provisions contained in the master sign program shall take precedence over the signage requirements of the applicable zoning district," which is what you were saying, "unless the zoning district's signage requirements are more stringent or govern requirements not contained in the master sign program." So the zoning district's signage requirements would take precedence over the master sign program under these conditions.
And I would just like to expand a little bit more. So the first page wasn't necessarily, my point was not to say that the master sign plan overrides the zoning district, but again, this is what, the initial statement is, the master sign program, if it doesn't cover everything, you fall back on these first items on the first page. But the, yes, in reading page two under C, it says, again, "The provisions contained in the master sign program shall take precedent over signage requirements of the applicable zoning district." So the master sign program is the guiding document unless the zoning restrictions, the zoning district's signage requirements are more stringent or govern requirements not contained in the master sign program. So that, I think that would take us into the definition of more stringent.
Just, if I may, Phil, just to follow up a little bit. So I think we're all saying the same thing, but it's referring you to the C2 zoning district standards, correct? The C2 zoning district standards is what Phil just referred to in 1822.110, signs in the C2 regional shopping district. The first paragraph in that, in that zoning district's signage requirement tells you to refer to the approved master sign program. So in fact, it's consistent, and in fact, you're doing exactly what it says. It's not more stringent. It's in fact, in the C2 regional shopping district, it says, "Go to the town center and the village sign regulations." So there's no inconsistency here, and in fact, it just flows back to whatever was approved in the master sign program. These other sections, in our view, does not, would not apply in that circumstance. It would be if there was another actual center that was not the town center or the village that is, that the first paragraph refers to, that, then you would actually go down and look at one, two, you know, these other sections in the C2 zoning district. So in fact, there is no more stringent signage requirements in the C2 zoning district.
Just to reiterate, I think it completely makes sense that a shopping center would have a master sign program because you're not dealing with frontages on the streets, you're not dealing with, you know, size of building frontages like you would, you know, at Pete's Coffee or Cafe Verde. So it's a very different environment. And so that's why other zoning ordinance, other places I've worked, also have master sign programs for shopping centers because it's a unique, it's a unique environment.
But I think even more so, the zoning ordinance has specifically called out the town center or village to even be sort of even more unique than the typical master sign program in this regard.
But 2013 was a sign program that we approved.
Yes. And I think even, we also, there's also another way to look at this as well, which is another route to the same thing, but if you recall, these are also precise plan amendments. The precise plan by its very nature, and I can call out the section, I think it's, do you have it, 1818? Let me pull it up for you specifically, since we're getting into a technical discussion here. I'll have it pulled out. So it's 1818010 for, and standards and requirements for overlay districts. And it says, "The following regulations are common to all special purpose overlay districts established by this chapter and shall apply in all such districts." The village is in an overlay district, and that's why we have a precise plan under the general provision, subparagraph two, it says, "Standards for coverage, density, building heights, setbacks to properties not included in the project, off-street parking and loading, and signs shall be consistent with the regulations of the underlying zoning district, except as modified in the applicable overlay district or as shown on an approved preliminary or precise development plan." So that's another, it's sort of, either way you look at it, I think we are sort of comfortable with the fact that the signs as approved in 2012 and then followed up in 2013, and then the ones that are being considered today are entirely consistent with the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So that's a good explanation of which is taking precedence, and the master sign program is in place in lieu of having a vacancy in the precise or plan amendment of the sign program that the C2 zoning would overrule. So the C2 zoning does not take effect because we have a master sign program. So does that generically, you want to think about that for a minute, Phyllis, or rotate on that while we check around? Okay, we will. So, Phil, I'm going to ask the other commissioners, but do you want to finish with 18.22.020, and then we'll come back to the commissioners?
Pretty much the next two pages are a similar response in that the master sign program does address these issues. The third page from Ms. Hale's email is 1822.050, "No signs shall project above the eve or parapet line of a structure." And again, this is, you know, the master sign program for the village, West Freeway signs specifically says, "They shall be located where they're located."
Right.
And then lastly, "None of the proposed signs on elevations provide primary access." I think we went over that before.
Yeah, it's a repetition of the previous thing from 1822.110. So, all right. Commissioners, Dr. Bundy, relationship to what we've just gone over and this set of sign ordinance, if you have any questions for staff?
No, I appreciate the explanation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
I had one question. So is there dimmers or an off at night with the lights in that sign program? Are they on all night?
The zoning ordinance actually specifies that all lights shall be turned off by 11:00 PM or close of business, whichever is later.
So that's not addressed, so that's an instance in where that would supersede and take over in making those signs conform to that zoning or?
Correct.
Example. In the absence of other specific regulations or requirements in the master sign program. Right. Good enough. Thank you.
With that said, my recollection of that evening was that everything would be turned off and be subject to review of brightness. And even though Phyllis and I are the only ones here saying that we're in the room that night, so that's what I recall, and they do go, they do go off. There are signs in other locations in town that do not go off as they're supposed to, but these do go off. And as I recall, the Ann Taylor sign was considered too bright, and I think we asked them to tone it down, and I don't know whether that ever happened or not. That, Ms. Bendel, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I have just comments.
Okay. All right. So with that said, does anybody have anything else that was put on the dais tonight that they want to ask staff about before we hear from the applicant? Okay. So very good. Gentlemen, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Stan Hoffman, property manager at the village. First, I'd like to extend two apologies to the commission and the community. Two weeks ago, I stated that we had positive feedback. I have since heard from two community members that I met with who told me that my recollection was different from their recollection. So there are at least two people that I'm aware of who were supportive of the paints, the paint colors, not the signs. But I want to tell you what was said in that meeting, which is maybe why I left the meeting, misunderstanding the intent. And that was, one, one person made this statement, said, "You know, this was a fight a long time ago. My generation needs to let go and turn it over to the next generation. It's their community now, and it's up to the next generation to really determine what kind of community Cordermadera is going to be." I interpret that one way. So anyway, I apologize for misrepresenting those two comments. The other thing I want to apologize for is, in the past couple days, the comment was made about our presentation that, well, about. made about our presentation that, well, about me, I guess, that number one, I was being a bully, number two, I blindsided the community, and number three, that we are operating in bad faith. I don't see that, but it's not up to me to determine how people feel when they hear my words. So, in the event that I've been any of those things, I'm, number one, I, I deeply apologize, and number two, I'm mortified because, you know, the village is part of this community. We're good neighbors. I feel very much a part of this community and, and care deeply about this community. So, if, if, if we have in any way offended anybody, that, that, that is inappropriate, and, and, and I'm sorry for it, and I will be as polite as I can tonight and try not to say anything to upset anybody. That's, so, again, please accept my apologies. You know, we, we're spending a lot of time about what was discussed, and when the center first opened in nineteen eighty-five, I imagine it was discussed in nineteen eighty-four, and then again in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. And I don't doubt that at the time, the decisions that were made, made sense. But it's not two thousand and twelve, it's not nineteen eighty-five, it's two thousand and nineteen, and the shopping center world has dramatically changed. In, in, in nineteen eighty-five, all you needed was a sign that said Nordstrom's and Macy's, and you had, you had crowds coming to the shopping center. Now, it's the small shops that are driving traffic. Now, it's, it's, it's businesses like Tesla that are doing the same volume as Nordstrom's. In, in, in a space this big, they're doing as much as, as a department store is doing. It's important to this community for Tesla to stay here. They're generating a lot of sales tax, and they're generating a lot of traffic to the That's what's different today. You know, we're, we're on top of things. The, the village is doing very, very well because we've, we've been able to change as, as our society changes, as our community changes, and, and we're no longer what we were in nineteen eighty-five. We're, we're, now we have stores like Apple and Tesla and Microsoft and RH. You know, I had lunch today with the Marin Convention Visitors Bureau. She said that there are, and, and, and these are low estimates, there are fourteen million visitors to Marin every year, fourteen million. She said, "About seventy percent of those are just here for the day, and the rest are staying in our, are, 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 are spending the night here." There are fourteen million people. I imagine most of those are driving up Highway one-on-one through Corder Madera on their way to the wine country. They don't know, they don't know the stores that are in the village. You know, it's easy to say everyone knows what's in the malls, and, and if you live in Corder Madera, I, I believe you probably have a pretty good idea what's in both shopping centers, probably a better idea Monty Center, at Town Center, but this isn't for us, this isn't for you guys. You guys know that we have a, a Microsoft store, but those fourteen million don't. And, and that is an opportunity to capture sales and sales tax for this community and for our shopping center. I, I, fourteen million is a big number, and I'd like to get some of those fourteen million to do some shopping while they're here. We have to let them know what's in our community. You know, I kind of feel like this is driving a car with a flat tire, and, and I'm being offered a Band-Aid, and, and, and Band-Aid isn't good enough. You know, we've, we've suggested that the sign program doesn't work, it's ineffective. And virtually everyone I've spoken to, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm a member of the Bay Club, so I can look out that window three, four nights a week, and I, I see the village, and I, I, I see this kind of Charlie Brown sign program that just, the presentation of the village is, it's, it's, it's not a strong presentation. It's kind of a mismatch, and, and, you know, what's surprising me is, it seems to me that there's some people who are trying to find a way to say no to us, which perplexes me because I think what we're asking for is reasonable and necessary for our economic, when I say our, I don't just mean the village, I mean the, the entire community, our economic viability. Corder Madera is, 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 is a community that generates, I don't know what percentage of, of our budget is, is from sales tax, but it's a pretty big number, and we want to keep it strong, we want that number to get bigger, not smaller. And, and we're looking, I've always believed that you should find a way to say yes. You know, we're not asking this because we're, there's no diabolical plot here, you know, we don't, we're asking this because our tenants are telling us that, that the sign program isn't working. People in the community are telling us the sign program isn't working, and we look to you as the leaders of this community to, to listen to us. You know, we need this program, the community needs this program, our tenants need this program, and, and we're really, we implore upon you to, to consider our request for, for the good of the village and the good of the community. Anyway, I don't want to run this in the ground. I, I, I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of, of emotion on this issue, I'm not sure why. I, I don't see an outpouring of, of outrage over this request. I'm kind of, this, I'm very disappointed. I consider Jana a dear friend. I admire Jana. I'm a little blindsided, actually, at, 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 at her position, but I respect her position. She's one of the brightest people I know, and I'm perplexed at, at, but when Jana told me that it's time for her generation to let go and, and let this generation make some decisions, I, I hope you listened to that advice from Jana. And, and, and we fully acknowledge that there's some language in there that, quite frankly, I don't understand, that technical stuff, you know, and if, 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 if we're trying to kill this thing, I'm, I'm sure we can kill it for many reasons, but I'm imploring you to, to not kill it. I'm imploring you to, to, to listen to the experts. You know, I send you all that, that photo of our Microsoft store, which is a logo, and that's it. That, that, that's, that's, that's the way people shop today. They're, they're not, the, the shopping center model with two department stores, the department stores are not where it's at right now. It's, it's these retailers like Apple and Tesla and Microsoft. We should embrace these guys. We, we, we should hope that none of them want to move to Mill Valley, you know, and we should, we should do everything we can. We should roll out the red carpet for these businesses that view Corder Madera as an ideal place for them to, to locate their business, and, and we should listen to them when they tell us there's fourteen million people that aren't, don't even know we're here, and what we're proposing, quite frankly, I think aesthetically, it's very nice, and I hope, I hope some of these words will sink in. Anyway, I'd like to turn this over to Sadiq Mahindru, our, our architect, who will maybe elaborate a little bit on, on these comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stan.
Sadiq Mahindru with SCFM Design Studio. Good evening, members of the commission and staff and the public. I, I, I'm going to not repeat myself, but I heard certain things at the last meeting. So, I, I took a step back and said, "What, in the limited time I have, but what is the best I can do to support what, what we are proposing?" And what I've decided to do is take you back, give you a little bit of history. I happen to have the history because I was very active in the re, complete revitalization of Corder Madera Town Center in the, in, starting in eighty-four, which was about the same time as this project was just a year or so ahead of us. And before that, I had been for the, since the late seventies, I was working on revitalizing retail centers. So, let me just take you back and sort of put this in context because the context has been talked about, which is, we didn't have signs before, and why, why do we need signs now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me just interrupt and say that the distant history is, is important, but where we are is a proposal to change from what we have right now to something more than what we have right now.
Sure.
So, what exists is, is permitted and okay, and that's a sign program. And then what you're asking for is a, an improved, a different sign program. So, you know, no one is saying that no sign should go there. So, to say that we're saying no sign should go there is not what we're saying, and so, please don't dwell too much on this, this history and so forth.
Yeah, yeah, I will not, yes, I'll, I'll do my best. The, the model that was used for this project back in the eighties was actually a model that was developed in the sixties, and this is the tail end of it, where a mall used to be a building, not a complex of buildings where you walked in. It was a building, it had one or two major entrances, and it had two or three department stores. It was a massive bunker, everything was inward, it was monolithic, it was homogenized, and the only sign you needed was the name of the complex, whether Sun Valley Mall or Sears or Macy's. What was built was really a, a hybrid because it, it called itself the village, which was a new term, and they thought malls were never called villages, and they were never called town centers, that, because that time, the late seventies, this whole idea of open-air lifestyle centers came along. So, what you're seeing is a, something that was built in a, in a, in a time when the time was already transitioning, and they did that approach. Today, as, as Stan said, what, what we want to do today, which was the goal, I think, in, back in two thousand and twelve, we wanted to do, which, in our opinion, doesn't do the job at all, and that is, we want to have this evolve into, we want people to see it as a district, as a campus. It's an urban space to experience urban life, where you entertain yourself, you dine, you shop, you meet friends. It's a neighborhood, it's a collection of experiences. Now, you must have heard this word experiential retail, that's very common, because we can buy everything on the internet, but why do we still come here? Because of the experience. Multiple identities, as Stan mentioned, have become very important. And finally, village, let's turn this into a village, that is the name of it. So, when I say all that, and then I bring people here and drive by and by first time, this does not look like a village. Town Center looks like a village. And Town Center, we were ahead of our time, we made sure that all sides facing the neighborhood, the middle pedestrian alleyway, as well as facing the freeway, we literally had to cut large openings and holes in the buildings because there were just JCPenney where Container Store and, and so on, those stores are, we had to cut windows above, there were no windows, where we have Crate and Barrel, that used to be the back of a drugstore, so, there was a loading dock. So, we did that, and, and I'd say we were ahead of the curve, the center was not, in a way, and partly, we were forced to do that because we actually started, the developers of Town Center, sorry, of, yeah, the, the Town Center started with the notion of department stores also, except they could not get them at that point. That was just showing department stores waning in any case. So, we ended up being a department store less complex, which is the trend now, that you have lots of centers. Bay Street in Emeryville doesn't have a single department store, they have Microsoft, they have Apple, they have Anthropologie, they have lots of the stores that you see here, but they don't have a department store. So, what, when I was charged to take a look at the colors and the signs, I'm going to come to that, my objective, Phil, can we, can we go to my slides? So, with that background, what I'm trying to do is, obviously, we, we cannot move the entire complex over to the east and, and have entrances and more shopping on the west side. With the first slide?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let's just go, I'll go through it quickly. But through the use of color and improved signage, what we're trying to do, yes, so, we're trying to change this monolithic appearance essentially that doesn't say, "Come in and experience the place." I, I, it was interesting, I, I read through the comments, and, and Jana, who, who I do not know, made a comment here, and, and she said that, "Witness the appeal of the frequent short and compelling, don't just come to eat, come to experience." La Toscana restaurant ads on CNN, she, she's actually advocating that this is how advertising is done, and so, I like to say, this does not say to me, this picture, that I can experience anything here. To me, it's, 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 it looks like warehouses, sort of stacked together with only two names. The, so, in order to do that, architecturally, we, we feel that there are different buildings, but because they're all uniformly colored, you don't see that as a grouping, as a collection, which would make it closer to a village or a, or a campus. So, that's the first thing we are doing. And now, this is the inside, the inside does look like a village, but it doesn't come across on the outside, so it's completely hiding its identity. So, this does look a collection of buildings, they're almost individual, the Pottery Barn Building looks like it's a building by itself. So, when we look at this, so the color, so we looked at the roof plan, and we see all these different buildings. So, one thing we're doing, first thing is, we thought, we have a, we have a wonderful break in this long, thousand-six-hundred-foot-long facade, let's utilize that as a symbolic sort of breaks, as a teaser to give you a view of what's inside. So, we did that, highlighted that, and then we, we are highlighting the angular buildings versus the buildings where the, the wall is parallel to the freeway, connecting these angular buildings. So, we are moving towards giving the impression to people that this is a complex or a campus or a district or a neighborhood or a village. The signage, and, and here is, the signage, as you saw, as you see here, is, I think one of the, one of the odd things about, and I wasn't part of that, so I, I can, I suppose criticize it, that, that, the signage, where you restrict the fonts and the colors, that to me is, is almost detrimental to, to today's retailers, and, and that's kind of the reason we haven't had a, a line out the door for, for filling these, these, these slots, because it's all about visual impressions. It's, it's like they say, it's all about the clicks. So, to turn somebody's sign into, if you change the font, you're literally taking their icon away from them. And so, what we did is, we struck a balance here, and you can see, and given that in this sixteen-hundred-foot stretch, we have only six signs in one direction, five in the other direction, we've, what we have come up with is a, a plan where we are balancing between giving the individuality, which is allowing their logos, if they have a logo, and their font and color, on one hand, that is giving them the individuality to sort of utilize, but within, on the flip side, within fairly tight constraints that we have put on them, the size, the height, and their, and it'll take too much time, you may explain the details, but in the guidelines, the states, for example, they have two feet. the details, but in the guidelines, estates, for example, they have two feet. If their standard logo is our standard sign, so to speak, has a three-foot logo and a small letters, well, they would still have to comply with the two foot. So they would have to make the letters smaller. So we have a restriction of sign, uh, size, length, and the height. We have a restriction of how many lines it can have. Many tenants have two lines, their words are stacked. Restoration Hardware is one of those. Well, if they were to go here, they could not, they could not comply, I mean, I mean, they would not comply because we, they cannot be stacked, our letters. So there, there are restrictions. You may not think we have enough restrictions, but there are restrictions here, so that we don't end up with signs that look aesthetically not compatible with this ledge sign approach that we have. The quality of construction is restricted, meaning that they all have to have exactly the same kind of high-quality detail where the edges, we don't have, it's a trimless cap, so it looks a very clean, neat sign. And, and the type of sign, of course, which is they all are front illuminated, we don't have a combination of halo or side lighting, it's all front illuminated. So that's, I think that's our, so you can see here, this is the qual, this is the type of sign. Now, all these three are different fonts. They, in this example, they happen to be white, but they're all three different fonts, but you can see their font, their, their, but the construction is exactly the same. They're high-quality, they're not different mechanism or lighting, or neon, or something else. I want, I have added a couple more slides here, and then I'll finish. I think there was a request that you wanted to see, or, or Phil actually had asked us, give us some examples of tenants. And so here, we took randomly, this is not to say that these are the signs that will be there, but these are tenants in, in our center. And you can see the Peloton sign, for example, what we did there, they have a logo and a sign, but typically in their advertising and, and, and other material, the, the logo is larger than the letter. And so we're taking the liberty of making the logo smaller. If they wanted to maintain that proportion, then they would have to drop the size of the Peloton alphabets. Just, just, just to explain what I said earlier. So, and that, Microsoft is the, in this case, Microsoft is the, is another one where we have, so they, Microsoft will have to fit within that two-feet-high. So the M, M is about the same size, but all of the lowercase letters are smaller accordingly. Tesla is this. And here is, finally, in support of what I think Stan was talking about too, is that we have a number of tenants that, Lululemon, for example, they don't, most of the stores, they, they don't have, they don't write Lululemon, this is their sign. So that's where the retailers are moving nowadays. And, but ultimately, I think our goal is, we want people driving by feel that this is a place where I can come, it's lively, it's, it's got, it has various elements, like food and dining and shopping, and all of that, that I can do, merchandise. So it needs to express that on the freeway side. And I, if I can repeat myself, I know we cannot physically move the buildings, because I, I, I am personally an advocate for having signs where the entrances are. I, I totally agree with that. But we're talking about re-imaging an existing center, and so we have to take baby steps towards opening this up and, and making it relevant today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Commissioners, do you have any questions you want to address to the applicants at this time? Margaret?
Um, well, one, one thing that, that strikes me, and perhaps you could address it, is I often go to the Stonestown Shopping Center. Stonestown used to be a village.
Yes.
And, and it didn't work. So it became a very, very busy and popular one-story or two-story that we have now. So, so a lot of what you've just said, I kind of question.
Well, can I, can I answer? It's interesting you mention Stonestown, because I worked on that project. It was one of the exceptions to the rule, meaning if everybody was demalling, opening themselves up, Stonestown went the other route, which is enclosed. It used to be open-air.
I know.
The fog and the climatic conditions over there were so bad from a, from that standpoint, it was decided, plus it was a one-story. So the only way they could do it is to go two levels up, and then you would have really created a wind tunnel in the middle. So that ended up being, that does not mean that it's always going to stay that way. Stonestown is experiencing changes now as well. But it was a, in, within San Francisco, it, it was, I would say, the only enclosed mall after it was done. So, so even in San Francisco, it was, and at that time, exception to the rule. Now, we have a few enclosed malls, Westfield Center is that, but they, they are enclosed because they're in a very dense urban environment. And to have that many shops, the only way you can have them is to have them on multiple levels. So, and I, I hope that explains.
And how do you compare the Village to Stanford Shopping Center?
Oh, I think this Village of Stanford is very similar. I think Stanford Shopping Center, and, and there's another one, if you're familiar with Stanford, you're probably familiar with Town and Country, which is pretty much across the street.
Which is more like the Town Center.
Which is more like the Town Center. I think all, all of those projects are tenants like, like the tenants we have here, and Stanford has, they prefer that model. They don't prefer the Stonestown model, but they're an indoor mall, because they, they see where department stores are going.
But they don't have signs on the outside, except the stores.
I realize that, but, but that's what I meant by, Stanford Shopping Center evolved in a major way, it has evolved over time, like the Town Center has, so it had the opportunity to do, to, to do that. They do have, they do have some signs, actually, even at Stanford, where it, there is no entrance, but, but they have, I've done some work where we put a display window on a blank wall, so making it look like it's a pretend kind of storefront, and making, because people are coming from the parking garage, in, in case of Stanford, or the parking lot, and they want to feel like they're, they're, they want to start their experience from the outside, they're kind of that lively, they don't want to see a wall of nothing, or just ivy growing. So you have to balance those things, I think. In this case, I, I, I would say, this center is, is very successful, however, it, it has a fundamental bones of the center such that the center is not surrounded by parking, but it's, it has its back to the freeway. And, and so it's a particular solution for this center.
And just one last question, when somebody, when a retailer puts a sign on the outside facing the, do, does the center get rent for that? How, do they pay extra to, to get that sign? Or?
Every situation is different. For, for retailers, that, some retailers are paying for their sign, other retailers that we are trying, that we're working with because their sales are not what they would hope that they would be, are not paying for their signs. We, we are, we work very hard to keep their center filled, and so some are paying, some are not.
I, I, if I can add, I think that there are centers where, where, where signs have been put, that they're maybe too close to the freeway, I, I can name a few, Powell Street Plaza in, in Emeryville, where you have this big, blank, stucco wall, and, and just signs slapped on. Every tenant has a sign. It looks horrible. And I, I mean, I would never want to do that. It looks totally horrible. And I think those are the signs, that those situations are the ones that have made planners and designers and, and us all sort of shy away from, and look very seriously about putting signs where there are no entrances, because that's the only way we could stop it. But our situation is, is different from that in two ways. One, these, these are only eleven signs. And so when, when you look at those centers that have signs, there are fifty signs, because every store has a sign, slapped on right next to each other, Wells Fargo, Beats Coffee, Ann Taylor, this, that. And there is no sort of definition to where the sign, how does it compose. We are fortunate because of this angular, I think whoever came up with the approach, three, four years ago, which is to put a ledge at the, at the tip of each of those buildings and allow two signs. I think that changes the, the whole visual impression. And that makes it, people might even think that that tenant is in that building, because we have different shed-like buildings. Now, whether they are or not is not the point, but driving by, you might think that. So the signs get more integrated with the buildings as opposed to slapped on, on a wall.
All right. Margaret, how do you feel? Is that your list of questions for the applicant at this moment?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lee?
Uh, so I have a few questions. So you're, you're a retail architect designer, right? So you're up with current trends. Do you find that in signage programs that are in new centers or revised centers, that a sign band in itself, that type of typology, because we did it in airports for a long time, do you find that that's actually a contemporary even methodology of doing new centers if, if, that, you know, it wasn't already constrained from two thousand thirteen or nineteen eighty-five? Would that be anything that, that a retailer would even be interested in now? I mean, outside of the presence to the freeway, but like, I guess, because what I'm getting at is, or trying to find out, is it seems like from the inside, the signs are not all linear on the same six feet above the, the, you know, or ten feet above the store, all in a band, right? And also, given that they can put it anywhere on their facade on the inside, it seems like they put them all over the place based on their branding. And then also, like you've pointed out in a lot of the images, and, is that they're just logos. So I guess what I'm saying is, is do you find that in general, for this sign band, that it even, even with this ask that you're doing, that ultimately, it's really doing what your, your clients or the, you know, the leases really would want to do or need to do, but are just kind of being forced to do even within the conditions that you're asking? So.
Uh, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll try to rephrase what you said to be sure that I understood it right.
Yeah, good.
What you're saying is, I think what you're saying is that the, the fact that what is being proposed, and what's already existing, actually, the sign band at a corner of the building, and each one is the same.
Yeah.
That if we didn't have these constraints, unique and all that, are you asking me whether from today's retailer standpoint, would that be a, would that be approach that would be considered?
Yeah.
And that, that's kind of what you're saying. I, I think the answer is yes, with certain conditions. And that is, ideally, sign band would, would be considered, but there would be an entrance below it. So I'll, I'll be quite honest, absolutely. And, and the reason I say that is because slapping signs on a wall is generally, I try to discourage. I mean, unless you're Macy's and it's a big building and you put your logo there, but if you're a lot of retail, I've always discouraged that at, at the Town Center. We don't have signs just kind of slapped on the wall. They are composed within a certain opening, or they are put on a ledge. And so they're upright, what, the putting a ledge upright, it, it kind of psychologically removes it, it's not on the wall. The wall is three feet back as a backdrop to the sign, but it's not on the wall. It seems almost like the ledge seems, it's just like putting a sign on an awning. If you have a fabric awning, we always, and at the Town Center, we have a number of sent, shops that have, that's their only sign, is the graphics on the awning, because the awning relates to the opening and not the building. So here, the sign band, to me, makes a gesture. And that's why we colored the darker blue below, partly because I want to give the impression that they may be even storefronts here.
Yeah. Or that the sign band is leading towards that.
Leading towards that, yes.
Right? So I get that. Okay. Thanks for entertaining a little bit more investigation about how you think about signage, so.
Yeah, well, I, I see what you're asking, and that, but they're constrained by a set of circumstances, so.
Right.
If they're going to put a set of signs up, they're looking to do the signs in the, virtually the only place.
They're staying within the constraints somewhat that are already there.
Right.
They're not asking for a complete redesign.
Right.
And if, he, it's like saying, if you had to design a mall the way this one is designed, would you put the signs up there? And yes, he probably would, but he wouldn't design a mall like this now.
Right.
So that's a, a given, right? He wouldn't design a building like that now. So he's stuck with what he's got. And so he's trying to put signs.
Well, I think, I think in any application, they can ask to radically redesign it, or they can respect what's already there.
But they're not.
I was asking if they respect what's there.
So, and that's what they're doing. They, they wouldn't want to redesign, we'd be here for a year.
Yes.
So.
Exciting, but.
That's all my questions were about that.
Great. All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, so as I understand it, the tenant signs that go up there would be determined by the village, and whether the tenant was on that, the, the west side of the village, or how would that get determined?
Regardless of where they are, inside the complex, these are, these are only eleven slots.
Okay.
And we have many more tenants, and they'll be allotted to whoever has the most need.
Okay. The, the other, in, in looking through the emails in relationship to this, I thought Pat Ravazio had a nice suggestion that not, I'm not looking at it necessarily in exchange for approval of something like this, but the idea of having solar panels, it does appear to me that you've really got a nice orientation for that. Is that something that Mace Rich, or Nordstrom's, or Macy's has considered that you're aware of?
That issue has come up, actually, at both centers over the years, and we've always been open to it. It, it, it's something that, we've been approached, like, I don't recall as Marin Clean Energy, but we were approached by a couple people when, when I was at Monty's Center, and we said, yes, you know, send us a proposal, we are, we are open to the idea, if it makes sense. And I can speak for the village, if, if someone was interested in doing it, and utilizing our roofs, we're open to it. It's not something that we would, we don't know how to do that. It's, it's, our, our, our tenants have their own PG&E meters, so not, each individual tenant wouldn't do it, but if Marin Clean Energy wants to utilize our roofs and generate electricity, call me, please. We'd love to talk to them.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, since this would come up again, is that you guys own the shell of the building, you rent it out, but they pay all their utilities. That's correct, right?
Mm-hmm.
With the exception of Nordstrom and Macy's. So if you were going to try to divide up all that solar power, you'd have to figure out to what assignment that collection of solar energy would go. Would it go toward the mall as a whole, or would it go toward individual stores, or how would you divide that up? I think that's a real problem, you know, if you put it up there.
Well, we, we, the, the shopping center controls the roof, the, the, the tenant doesn't. I, I don't know what the business model is for these guys. I don't know if electricity generated on someone's roof has to go to that property. I think it could be used across the street. So I'm saying, we control our rooftops, we can do whatever we want with them with, with your approval. But if we were approached, again, it, it's whatever they would present to us.
No, so the way it works, Dan, and you, you should know, but the fact is that you have to go to a provider of it to say, we want solar panels on our roof. No one's going to come to you and say, hey, except the, the guys that got bought out by Google, is it, or Cisco. The big one. And they will lease back to you. But you, the owner of the property is the one that has to initiate the application. It's not going to be a company that comes to you and says, you know, and it's not economically viable for you guys to do that, because they take such a large percentage of the bill and they own the panels and they can yank them off anytime they want. So that's the story. And you guys haven't, per your statement here, you'd have no inclination to go there and ask anybody for a proposal.
I disagree with your characterization, with all due respect. We've had conversations. When I was at Solano, they may have them up on the roofs now, but we were working with an outside company just before I left that was renting our rooftop and installing electricity. And it was their electricity. They were going to pay his rent for our roof and do whatever they wanted with the power they generated. So I know those models exist.
Yes, they do.
But, but, but it's, but I don't want to suggest for a moment that the village isn't interested. It's just, it has just not come up. I would imagine we have people on our town council that are in the green business. And I could possibly talk to him. But to suggest we're not interested is not accurate. It's just.
That's not what I said. I said that you have to stick your hand up in the air and you have to say, we're interested.
We're interested.
You know, so and then somebody has to come to you. But if you don't do anything, it won't happen.
We are very open-minded about that issue.
Okay, thank you. Phyllis.
Yes, could you put back the slide showing the monument sign? Is it still there?
I may have skipped it. No, this is existing.
I just want to see the monument sign.
Well, you know, ah, there.
Okay, that's not a very good one. I think yours was better, that you had Phil showed it better. But anyway, give you an idea. When the monument sign was put up, it was still back in the age, as you called it, of promoting the department stores. So the two department stores were going to be on it. The four sections underneath would have been used for the restaurants. There were several restaurants in the village at the time. Now, if you want to move forward and after, and looking at the email I sent to Stan about trying to look for compromise, trying to see what else is around, I've been thinking about using the monument sign. Number one, there is no reason to continue promoting Macy's and Nordstrom's. They have their names and their logos, per se, on their buildings. Number two, even if you wanted to leave them, I don't know what kind of an agreement you had when they were built. And I'm talking about just this big one in the front, not the two side entrances. You don't have to promote the four restaurants. And they're only, you only found three, so you put in Verizon. You could rotate the use of those four, if not those six slots, on a monthly basis, promoting the stores. And there are ways to do it. And that would show, if you want people to see what the stores are, they're not going to be looking up as they're driving by because they don't want to hit the car in front of them. They're going to be looking almost at eye level. And the monument sign, which is a very attractive sign, whether it's the current coloring or the new coloring, which I think is an improvement, would be a place where you can promote six of the stores a month and rotate it, because that's eye level for people looking ahead when they're driving their cars. And I think if you want to talk about working into the present time and into the future, you can consider doing something with that. I've heard nothing said about the monument sign except painting a dark blue. And I think you're missing a big opportunity by not doing that. And you could have those letters done within their individual brand and logos. And I think it's something you should be considering, no matter what happens tonight.
So are you saying that as an alternative to the building?
I would like to see it as an alternative. But even if it passes tonight.
So are you asking them to consider that? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, but I'm saying even if what the applicant has asked for does move forward tonight, I think it still should be considered because it is an asset to the center. If everything's being done as an asset to the center, here's one that's not being.
Let me just try to paraphrase that then. So you're asking the applicant if they would consider that as an alternative to the other signs and?
Number one. Number two, if not as an additional way to go.
Just briefly, there, it's an intriguing idea. There are currently contractual obligations with the tenants that are on there. And just so you know, I think Verizon spent, because there are signs on both sides, I think that little Verizon sign was something like $2,000 per side. That's a $4,000 illuminated sign. Easier said than done with that current situation. That said, should these contracts expire and not be renewed, I think the opportunity to change things is a wonderful idea. And I think it should be absolutely considered.
I would, only thing I would caution is, the scale is much smaller. And when scale gets smaller, then that's all the more reason that the tenant or the graphic designer would want their own color and the logo. And when they're that close to each other, then it becomes a slippery slope when you have, that's when, when, there are times when we are, when we do a monument sign for a shopping center, which is generally taller than this, let's say. And it's got about more names than here, maybe 12 names. And it could be Pier One and this and that. And what we try to do there is allow individual fonts, but not allow logos or different colors, because they are so close to each other that it looks like overkill and visual jumble. The reason where our 11 signs are, six on one side, five on the other, they're hundreds of feet, 150 feet apart from each other. That's where we think, that far apart, they can be a red Tesla and a white, you know, Verizon. So I would be careful. If we did that approach, at that point, I would still keep some restrictions about maybe not having all, all having different colors.
I'm just saying, make better use of the monument sign.
But you're right.
If you want to move into, you know, the 2020 and beyond, I think you're looking at something that was done in 83.
Right.
And variations that could be done. I mean, if this is the type of thing that you want, this is from the email that you sent us, Stan, all of us, that shows on two corners just the Microsoft logo. I don't see any, not only is it unattractive, it doesn't say anything to me, except it's four squares of four different colors. You need the name.
Okay, so are you?
And I am saying.
Go into a commentary about this. But is it, I do want to get to our commentary, but.
But I am asking you, is this what you were asking for? That on the back of the building, on one of the ledges, you're going to have a four-part square of four different colors?
He's got a slide for the different elements there that show the signage.
That was just an example to show the importance of today's retailers of logos. I mean, Apple, I have not yet seen an Apple store that says Apple. It just shows an apple. Now, they do have a name, Microsoft. And quite frankly, this is not their typical either, their places. So here, going back, I think here, it most likely, oops. It's most likely going to be, this will be their option.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, I want to check if it was just going to be logo only.
All right. I don't really have any questions other than really, let's just be clear about a process, that if this were approved, this is a guideline. We don't have anything. So staff gets an application for a sign and that's how it's reviewed if this is passed?
If this was passed, we would go, we would use the design criteria edits that I showed on my one slide. You know, that would be, that's the most concrete, you know, text that we would, that we would use to determine whether signs met the qualifications or not. So it wouldn't, it would not be this graphic.
Okay.
This is the first time we've seen it and so.
All right. So, thank you very much. I'm going to ask if Mr. Ash would like to say something. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. Jim Robinson, I'm sorry. You know, who else would like to speak besides Mr. Robinson on public comment?
Jim Robinson on Ash.
On Ash, right.
Appreciate that.
Excuse me.
We like to give notoriety to our street name. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thanks to the staff for the report and also the copies of the emails. And I had a chance to look at those before the meeting and I noted that there are four emails in support of the application, one in opposition. I would add my name to one as in support of the application. I spoke with you last time, ad nauseam, so I'll keep my comments brief. But with respect to color and size and logo, and I know that I've used this example before, but when I enter into what I consider in my town, the main street, that's the town center. And I just did so several hours ago at shopping. And you look between Safeway and Wells Fargo, what used to be sort of a earth-tone, what I call a Mediterranean architecture. And in the last 10 or 15 years, that architecture's changed dramatically. And if you note between the Safeway store and the Wells Fargo, there are at least five or six elevations. And there's the Supercuts, there's the Cordera Cleaners, there's the town office, town center offices. And then there's the Veggie Grill that sort of imitates the architecture of the village over here and also kind of, also sort of replicates the architecture of a Eichler home, in my opinion. But the point of bringing all this up is that all of these have different sizes, different types, different colors of signs. And I realize these are storefront signs, but nevertheless, they create more visibility for those of us who live in the community than what we're talking about in terms of the Village Shopping Center. And I think Commissioner Metcalfe makes a great point that when we're driving down 101, our eyes should be on 101 and the traffic. And we generally aren't looking at the signs that are at the village. And I don't know to what extent they're going to be able to increase the visibility of the center or those that occupy it. But I think that if this is something that those who are prospective tenants or current tenants feel it's important for their viability, I would concur that it's not anything that offends me as a town resident for the past 22 years. I used to be a thorn in Stan Hoffman's side when he was at the village, or excuse me, at town center, when I saw a change in the colors of the Crichton Barrel when it went from sort of earth-tone, this big white, you know, kind of screamed out as you drove by it. But I understand that. And, you know, I since bought a couch and I bought a chair at, so I've reconciled with the color. And I realize that's part of the logo. And maybe that is the sign of the times. And I think that while we have to respect that, I think we also have to continue to respect what's important to those in the community and what's important to the planning commission. But I think that what's being requested is reasonable. I support it and I hope that the planning commission will also support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. All right, sir, you're next.
My name's Carl Spurzen. I live on Lakeside Drive in Madera Gardens. Been in the town for exactly 30 years now. So I've seen a lot of change over there. I'm going to try and get through my comments quickly. Want to talk a little bit about my knowledge of the history. I think the need for identity over in the mall. And then I want to talk about the tax side of things. I'm on the sales tax committee and I'm also on the citizens' finance committee. So just the history quickly. I was here and Jeanne Hale, actually, I should start off. Thanks for all your work here. Pardon me for not saying that upfront. I like Jeanne Hale a lot. And I did talk to her back in the 2012, what have you. And I was a little surprised at kind of her attitude towards it and kind of the detail that people were trying to go into to, you know, micromanage what signs should look like and all that. So I kind of stepped back and let it go, but I was not in agreement with what happened. And I do agree with much that's been said here. The tenants need identity. There is no identity out there right now. And I think that's important for the tenants and important for the town. It does drive sales. We get a lot of people come up from San Francisco. And so I think it's, you kind of know where I'm going there, so I'm not going to waste more time there. In terms of fonts and I, I'm fine. You've got smart people here figuring that out. So I'm okay with what comes up there. On the tax revenue side, I think it's really important. Stan brought up some things here. Tax revenues for the town are exploding. We're doing very well. On the sales tax committee for fiscal '19, which we're halfway through, we had budgeted about $3 to $3.2 million. That's over the $2.5 million that was originally thought. Right now, the budget's up north of $4 million for fiscal '19. That is tremendous for the infrastructure of the town and it's largely due to the village. The village has tremendous tenants, the top five, Nordstrom, Tesla, Apple, Microsoft, Verizon. They comprise about 80% of what's going on over there. So I think it's very, very important to respect those tenants. Let's be nice with them, because they're helping the town and we can help them. Let's be nice with them, 'cause they're helping the town and we can help them. The other part of the sales tax is just overall. The town's budgeted sales tax was about $6.5 million. We're now looking at $7.5 million, and that's largely due to the village. So I, I think as a town for 30 years and me being here, I like what's happened to the village. I spent time with Stan. I think his outreach has been good. I went over and met with him and looked through the plans. I saw the colors. I'm, I'm fine with it all, and I think Stan's does, done a great job. So I don't think you're operating in bad faith, so I'm sorry you felt that way. And just quickly on the emails, I read the whole packet, went through the emails. There were a lot from Jeanne Hale and three positive ones. So I'm not sure where the heavy negative aspect is coming, and I appreciate Jeanne, but that's kind of my, my observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Anyone else wanna get up? Young man? No? Okay. All right. Then there's always Monty, if he wants to stand up and say something? No, he can't.
I'd love to.
Well, golly.
I was gonna save it for my presentation, but I'll say it now. This is a really, pardon me, I apologize. Monty Stevens, property manager, Town Center, Cordera Madera. This is a really interesting conversation, and I'm really enjoying it. I know you guys are, you're burnt out on signage, but this is, it's good timing and I think it's extremely appropriate. Retail isn't a tough way. We are battling with online shopping, and we're both outdoor centers. Weather was tough for us in the December months, but I think this is a really nicely done presentation, and I think they have the right person at the, at the helm looking at it. They've done a fantastic job at Town Center, and I think Stan was smart to bring him in. And I do support this. I feel that these tenants need identity, and they need their identity. In reference to sales tax, one comment I wanted to say regarding that is that the last numbers I saw is that these two shopping centers generate 72% of the entire sales tax for Town of Cordera, which is pretty impressive. I've never seen that in any town before. It's almost always automotive and shopping centers. So these are two extremely important centers, and I get to sit down with these gentlemen tomorrow and talk about our signage package, but I think that this is a real positive, not just for the village, but for Cordera. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. So being that I don't think there's anyone else that wants to make public comment, we'll close the public comment section of this meeting unless we took phone calls, which we don't. So with that said, it's time to decide what we're gonna do. It's 8:30. I'm going to ask for some comments. In one hour, we have to decide if we're gonna go past 10. So let me start with Ms. Bandell over here, and any comments that she would like to make about this proposal for signage, and I'm interested in what you have to say.
Well, first of all, I guess I was a minority of one the last time, but it doesn't get pa, I don't care for the color choices, and as far as the design findings, I couldn't get past design finding number four with the colors that are being proposed. So if that forecloses any further comment that I have about the signage, I don't know if it's worth going, going further.
Well, the signage and the colors we saw as two elements, and if you'd like, I mean, that's a registered color commentary, and maybe there's someone else who's decided to swing around to that, but I'd like to hear what you have to say about the signs.
The other thing that bothers me, and I guess this is my perspective, is I don't really agree with the staff's interpretation of the ordinances and the legal aspect of the way the ordinances impact.
Uh huh.
What we're, what, what's being proposed here. I guess I'd have to sit down and analyze them a little more closely than I have so far, but my law review of that isn't exactly what Adams was or Phil's was. And so that, it, it makes me feel uneasy about going ahead and saying, I think it's a good idea. I don't think, I'm not there yet. The other thing that kind of bothers me a lot, and I've been here for 30 years also, is that what the village did was take away a natural piece of property that was here. It was a marsh. And I like the village very much, and I happen to like that sort of barn look to the whole thing. And I do think the buildings could be distinguished by color that fit into the landscaping a little more, rather than paint, have one color going across, you know, at the bottom and one going across on the top. But the signs wouldn't even be a question if the village had put in decent landscaping on the highway side. And right now, it looks like rubble on the highway side, and that bothers me a lot.
It's slow growing, yes.
Rubble. And so right now, those are the comments I have about the signage and colors.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lee.
Like I said, I'm fine with the color. I think it's a nice update. I think if you wanted it to be marsh, you could have left it as marsh and should have made that fight 30 years ago. It's not, it's an ongoing building. I think the whole discussion about the signage is a little bit muted, because honestly, most of the new facilities all have logos and not even words, because most people look on their iPhones and identify with apps and logos, and that's the generation that's gonna be purchasing there, is the millennials. So even text as a general discussion, is, is that the right one? And, you know, so really, it's, I've heard from other commissioners, oh, we give them color, you know, logos and then smaller white text or something like that. I'm sure if you gave them bigger logos, they might just go for that, and we would have four of the biggest companies in the world put their branded, you know, graphics that sell trillions of dollars worth of merchandise on the front of it. I'm sure that those marketers really know what they're doing and know their clientele, which is a much broader group than these five people here. So then the other thing is, is, you know, I've been driving around the community a lot, and not just the village, but along the 101 corridor. And that's really what we're talking about. It's a regional mall. We're not talking about the backside of a strip mall, inside, you know, the town perimeter, like really in, we're talking about on 101, it's a 10-lane freeway. All I see is 100 red lights of traffic in front of me and then white lights coming towards me. The other thing I want to say is, you know, when I see red lights and I see white lights, white light is much more bright. So I consider what the impact of the signage is at night as much as the color during the day, 'cause it's more muted during the day. But white light is incredibly intrusive, you know, and if, if someone chose to do logo, like have you ever, if, if you printed this document in blue text, which one has more impact, black during the day or dark gray? Or blue or yellow text, right? Like if someone wants to brand identify the color, I don't know that it's the clearest communication vessel, but it is about identification. And that's really what we're considering. It's not, it's not really about visibility, and that's a lot of the argument, is, oh, it's gonna be so garish and in your face, but honestly, red is a more muted lit color than white. So I don't really buy that argument. And, you know, in general, I feel like there's a lot of baggage about bad landscaping mistakes made by the previous owner, and I agree, it is. You know, it would really stand to, to be fixed up. You know, the Town Center also cut down a lot of old growth trees and planted new ones, and they're growing in, but I was also sad about that move, right? But these are retail centers that are looking for presence, and so, you know, part of it is the landscaping doesn't sell merchandise, right? And, and also, they're not doing a landscaping plan. I hope that they come back, because I hear a lot of discussion about that, but we, we really shouldn't be considering that. This is really about signage. There are a lot of other interests and ways that you could benefit the community as other, you know, recent applications have been seen doing, but that's a different discussion. I'm not gonna hold up the discussion of the signage based on bigger critiques of the village. That's what Nextdoor and other outlets for social media are, right? I did wanna address your thing about the, the sign band. I think that the muted brown is a little bit outdated. It's not part of the consideration, but, you know, honestly, maybe they could do digital. And instead of even doing stores, they could talk about events and other things that are attractive inside the center that would get people, more people in in bigger masses. But that's a different discussion for them to come back later.
You're talking about the monument sign.
Yeah, the monument sign.
Okay, you said sign band. I didn't know what you meant.
Right, so, sorry, sorry. The monument sign. Like I, I, inside of it, fine, but that's not what we're considering. It's the gray and a little bit of bronze, and I think that's a nice, a change. It's just a refresh. Maybe they just need to repaint it. So I also like the idea of using the sign band, identifying it, I see what they're saying and I believe it, that it's a, they're trying to make it a little more affront to the freeway, to get people to linearly see all these stores, and then accent the front primary entrance to the whole facility. So you can interpret it per lease, but the overall property owners may search in the main entrance, there's two of them, but that is one of them. And so if the signs and everything are on that side and trying to pull you in with the painting and stuff, I see that as a successful move in a contemporary way that is trying to change the understanding of that, but within the constraints of even, you know, the broader zoning. So, you know, I feel like there's a lot of kind of older, like, discussions about that sign band and, and how it went to this really particular minutia before, but even with the people that were there, the discussion was really about landscaping, this upsetness about a more drastic change, and then on top of that, there was this red sign that showed up, right? Like, and other things that scared people, and so they, it was a full-on retreat, right? And, I mean, honestly, last time, I felt like there was a lot of emotional and almost like PTSD damage about having to defend the past decisions from, from commissioners that were there at that time, where I didn't even feel like what I was trying to say or other commissioners was truly being heard. And so I just beg that you guys hear, like, the bigger picture and, and try to understand what I think is really gonna benefit the community and our tax base and everything that we're moving towards and helping the center grow and not die. You know, Stonestown has tried in little minutias to reinvent itself. You know, they're, they're turning a lot out again. So the little corner that's successful is the Trader Joe's and the McDonald's and everything that basically have reverted back to a parking lot strip mall, and then they're totally revital, rethinking the bigger sections on the other part of the mall. So like the whole, if we're gonna talk about it, let's talk about how those are failing or succeeding. And so that's what they're trying to do. So, you know, I, I see a lot of that. I met with the, the head of, the director of Westfield that does all of the concessioning for aviation down, down south, and, and just toured their newest facility, and signage is a huge part of that. And they've abandoned the traditional aviation sign band for a more varied thing for their concessioners, 'cause that's what they feel need, they need to do to be successful. So I just wanna be heard this time, and I'm sorry that I've taken so much time to express my feelings, but I didn't feel that way last time, and, and now I have, so thank you.
And in what way, in your point you just made, did you think you weren't heard last time about?
I, I feel like, I feel that I wanted to say more, but that we wanted to hold off to get more public feedback, because there were, there were, there was a lot of things that now have come to light about people in the background that were having discussions and decisions being made that I wasn't privy to, that were guiding decisions and overall control of the commission, that I, that I didn't understand, and so I didn't feel fully engaged or connected, and that was, that was just hard for me. So I, I just, as a junior member, sat back and listened, but I feel like these things are really important and that I am very educated about it. I really care about the community, and I've driven a lot around and thought about it everywhere I drive and seen all the signage everywhere, and really don't think this is gonna have a big impact, that it's a very, it's a, it's a center that's kind of getting unjust, like, scrutinization compared to the mismatch that is Strawberry or San Rafael or even other parts of 101 corridor within the, you know, this, this area. So I just, and I still think it's very clean and professional. They have some of the highest grade tenants there, and, and they're not gonna let it degrade into something we're not wanting as a town, so.
All right. I appreciate that. I, I get it. I understand that you have some things that were important about the veracity of it and your point of view, so thank you. Dr. Bundy, your expression, please.
Yeah, I'd like to elaborate on a couple of things that Charles said, and I'd also comment about the historic wetlands, where the village is located, where the Town Center is located, where the Town Park is located, and where they really, the wetlands extended almost up to this building. Jeanne Hale, as our town historian, has sent some photographs around from the 1920s and the 1950s. In 1920s, it was all wetlands, and in, in the 50s and 60s, you know, we really saw the development of Mariner Cove, Marina Village, and developments out on the wetlands that, in retrospect, never should have been permitted, because they, they really are on valuable wetlands. But the village went in where wetlands had existed many years before, but at the time the village went in, there, the North-South Railroad levee really protected the town from flooding and protected the village property from flooding. And as that project was eventually approved, we ended up with the shorebird marsh or shorebird, you know, wetlands, which really greatly enhanced the habitat. So the habitat is much better in that particular area since we've seen the village go in. And the shorebird marsh has also been a flood detention pond, which has really prevented flooding. So from the standpoint of reflecting the wetlands, I think that was maybe one of the original thoughts on the building, but really, the, the wetlands weren't there at the time, and the shorebird marsh has really enhanced the habitat. Like Charles, I've also thought a lot about this and spent time driving up and down 101, looking at everything from the Vintage Oaks to the Gateway Shopping Center, and all of them have branding, logos, colors, some of them much bigger. The Target at Gateway is really big, and there's no, there's no signage, it's just the bullseye Target that they have. And the, the, I, I can approve this project and make the findings for it, and even with some changes with colors and different fonts, I think we're gonna be much more low-keyed and appropriate than any of the other shopping centers that are here in Marin. So I, I think this is a good proposal. I really accept that I can't understand the business arguments for advertising, branding, you know, what's really important, but there are huge numbers of people that spend a lot of time and do a lot of research to see what really works for these individual retailers and these malls such as the village, so I, I support it.
Okay. That's well said, Bob. Thank you. Phyllis.
Okay. Just fast reference for the color. I approved the color two weeks ago, and I considered to approve of the colors. I like the colors. I will admit that my first impression of seeing that rear entrance, I'll call it, brought to mind General Maxwell Taylor during Vietnam, talking about the light at the end of the tunnel. But even that, I can get used to. I, they were, they're post-impressionist type colors, blocks of color, and I think it's modern and works in. I am not comfortable with the signs. I've never said that I was. I, I don't feel that it's the right way to go. The world is not gonna come to an end if it's done or not done, as far as I'm concerned. I do not think it will enhance the vision, as I say, because of the fact it is up high, because of the changes. And I also have found, and I'm not accusing you of, of this, Stan, but I have found with many applicants, they come with, this is an idea, they all have a plan, and by the time they put it together, it bears little resemblance. I would want, if it is approved, I want, would wanna see each individual sign, or the staff should see each individual sign before a final approval, because it's one thing to discuss things on paper, and it's another thing to put them into reality. And that bothers me considerably, that it doesn't happen as often as it should when planning commissioner, planning staff decisions are made. When I hear other commissioners talk about, you know, what they saw in other shops, I too drove all the way up, I drove up into Sonoma County and even looked at Cottington and places like that. We have to differentiate, as one of the letter writers did not, between front-facing and Town center stores are front-facing towards the freeway. And by the way, I don't know which one of you at that end talked about the landscaping. I think the landscaping at Town Center is probably the best I've ever seen at any shopping mall or center. I think it's outstanding. And I even asked Monty one time the name of the company that was hired to do it, 'cause they do it so well. Yes, there is landscaping that must, something must be done at the village. And after three times of doing that, landscaping along the freeway, it would be nice if it finally worked. It's a lot better than it started out, and you aren't here, Stan, so this is not pejorative towards you. But I am still concerned about the signage, how it is done, what is done, I, that's why, as I say, I did send you that email talking about maybe a type of compromise where I, currently, the color of the signs are too close to the color of the back wall. There's no doubt about it. It just gets lost during the day. To see a lot of contrast, as I say, using the color of the wall and that dark blue, they will stand out far more than they do today. I think if you stuck with, and I think it's Arial, the font that's used, even though some have used variations of like four or five Aриals, going into upper and lowercase letters, I think makes a big difference. And looking at, I guess, your list of things that you had before, small logos I can deal with. It is all the different colors and all the different fonts, and remember, you're driving by, if traffic is moving at at least 50 miles an hour, if you're lucky, and if it's 10 miles an hour, you don't care about the signs, you just wanna move. That it's just a wash of color that hits you, not individual names. I think it would be more outstanding using the darker blue against the lighter color, using upper and lowercase, and logos that fit into that 30 square feet were appropriate. It's my preference, rather than what your application asks for.
Okay. So in summary, then, you would reject essentially what they proposed, but you would be willing to consider a different format of the signage than is currently there?
Yes, I put that in writing. Everybody has a copy of it, what I sent out, plus, as I say, future use of the monument sign.
Right. Okay. So those are elements on the table. And I'm not sure where Commissioner Bandell stands at the end of the day on this. I think our straw vote that we took last week would still apply for the colors, that they would be approved. I'm not so sure about the signage at this moment.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Since we have two resolutions, one voting the entire application up, one voting the entire application down, what I understood from staff at the beginning, and I don't know which one of you spoke to Stan, that Stan wanted to keep it that way and did not want it separated. Is that correct, Phil?
That is correct. The applicant did not have a strong desire.
Okay. I think, I think we should go along with that strong desire and vote this application up or down in its entirety and stop trying to divide things up and do different things. I think it's the best way to move forward.
Okay. All right. For my part, I want to express some of what took place in 2013 here at the time. And part of what was proposed at the time was possibly garish relative to what's there now, certainly. But the idea that an understated signage for Corte Madera could be an asset rather than a liability. You've portrayed those signs almost as a liability to the tenants, that they don't have any distinctive identity with those signs. So there are communities around that have malls or groups of stores together that prefer to have a understated sign rather than a sign of significant distinction. You can drive to, I know, in Greenwich, Connecticut, for instance, the signs are almost low to the ground. There are many places where they're barely visible. And it's what's in the mall and people identify with that. Here, I, I do understand your problem. People don't know what's in the mall. This is not like the Nordstrom or the Center downtown where there's so many stores, people go there, they know that everybody's there. This is not the case. You've got a particular variety of stores. It's somewhere in between, just a few that you could put all the signs up and a lot that people just go to shop. People go to the village to do both. Many people I know just say they want to go and shop at the village. I go there for a reason. I don't go to wander around, but that's me. So, and I don't, I will admit, really don't know what's over there half the time, even though I walk through there. There's too many new brands that come out and they need some identity somehow. But the kids know what's over there. The younger generation definitely does. You know, there was a, a report about the number of people passing through Marin. The Transportation Authority of Marin took a tally of how many people actually drive on Highway 101 by Corte Madera. And there, so there are specific numbers of the people on the road in Corte Madera and where they're going. There is cell phone data that supports a specific number of travelers. So hyperbole aside, there is hard data that could be accessed for that kind of justification. Last time you left and you've said, Stan, you said, "I don't want to compromise," and that was what you wrote out. And yet, tonight you said, "I don't understand why anybody has this other position." What is that? So the idea of listening to somebody and being empathetic to it, and in this case, listening to the other side, means you understand what they're saying. I can understand what you're saying and why you need that signage out there. And I also have put forward, as other people, that there's a need for less expression and that there is a possibility of a less signage-intensive facade out there. And what I heard you say tonight is, "I don't understand that." It doesn't make sense to you. You, you read the objections and don't get it. So I think that's a, I would advise that you learn how to listen to what people are saying and pick up on that. Because I'm saying it, other people have said it, and you're saying you don't understand that. The idea of these hearings is to be able to listen to what other people have to say and then make something out of that and come to a compromise. So I, I don't see that you've changed your position at all. And I understand what it is that you want. I understand it very well. And I think that as much as I find the proposal for signage almost reprehensible, because it is, it's suddenly caving in to a, a norm, right, that's out there in the world. And where do we go from here? What's the next step, you know, that gets asked for? What does Monte then come back and ask for? What, what's next? I don't know. It's up to staff to figure that out. But I do see that the tenants over there are requesting more visibility and, you know, they should have it, as much as I don't like the idea of it. So, you know, that's where I would land on it, is that even though I don't like it, and I think it's giving into the norm, I understand why it's necessary over there. I wish you'd come up with a different proposal, but I don't hear any willingness to come with a different proposal. So that's too bad. I think it, it impacts, you know, the ask is of the village to say, "Come back with landscaping" or "Come back with something else." There's discussion of a pedestrian bridge across the freeway. Where is the village going to land on that? I hear you guys sort of drawing the line and saying, "This is what we want. This is only what we're going to do, and by golly, you guys should approve it." So where does the relationship with the town go? Doesn't bode well when you say, "I'm not willing to compromise and I'm not willing to listen to what other people are saying because I don't understand them." So we got a lot of things to do and I don't know where it's going to go. And that's a problem. It's going to be up to staff to figure it out. And there are a lot of community members that would like to go somewhere with the village in mind. And we got to a point where RH said, "We hear you. We will incorporate these things, but you don't represent RH." So, you know, I don't know. It's, it's just too bad that we're at this juncture. But the only thing we've got in front of us is a sign proposal that gives those tenants what they want. And I think that tax revenue is important. You know, I'm just going to ask for a motion either up or down from this group. I will vote, you know, I will make the findings, but, you know, let's see what we can do here.
I would like to make a motion to deny the application as currently stated. Do you want me to read through the whole approval?
Read the header of it.
Okay. I've got to get to it because there are two of them and I want to be sure I get the right one. I'm going to have to start putting, okay. "In the matter of public hearing for design review, price plan amendment and sign permit application regarding exterior paint colors, including highway-facing elevations for the village at Corte Madera, and the revision to the precise plan for 12-001 for highway-oriented tenant signs and the monument sign at 1618 Redwood Highway, PL-2018-0078-PDP, I support the resolution to deny this application." And I'd like to add, "With hopes that an amended application will come back to us in the future."
Okay. So at this point, go ahead.
I'm sorry. In fact, you just clarified. That's Resolution 919-005.
Okay. I thought I had said that. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Okay. So.
Okay. And can I add that wording, "With hopes that an amended application will come back to us in the future"? Judith?
It's up for a motion?
Motion.
Is that okay? As part of my motion?
Depends on whether it gets seconded. Yes.
Right.
Okay. I'm saying I could ask. Fine. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
So normally, at this point, we know where we're going and we would say, "Okay, is there a second?" And then we would vote. At this point, I'm going to say, "Is there a motion for approval?" Or?
Have to take one at a time.
Okay. All right. So, excuse me. Thank you for correcting that. So is there a second to that denial?
I second it.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Commissioner?
On the motions? Well, yeah. I, I don't know if you guys want to make any further?
I would just like clarification about what a yea or nay on that resolution means because usually we approve it or defer, but we've never had one to just fully reject it. So I want to know exactly.
A yes, an aye on this, or a yes, would, would actually, would approve the resolution denying the application.
And if it, if, if they cannot be found, is there then time to make a motion to try to approve it?
If, if the first motion doesn't pass, then a second motion may be made.
Yes. The chair can actually entertain additional motions or amendments.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions about that? No. All right.
Okay. I'll call them. Commissioner Bundy?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice, Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Yes.
Chairman Chase?
Uh, no.
So that motion does not pass?
And then a motion for approval. The other motion.
On the matter of design review, precise plan amendment and sign permit application regarding exterior paint colors, including highway-facing elevations for the village at Corte Madera, and revisions to the precise plan number 12-001 for highway-oriented tenant signs and the monument sign at 1618 Redwood Highway, PL 2018-0078-PDP, move to approve.
I second the motion.
Again, this is Resolution 19-003.
What happened to 004?
Long story.
I second the motion.
Okay. Seconded. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Bandell?
No.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye. No.
Okay. And Chairman Chase?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes three to two.
I will read the appeal statement. Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the commission may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department. There is $300 filing fee.
Okay. Let's take a break, please.
Thank you.
All right. We're back on the program here. And we have before us a, another sign application. So this is a new hearing for 223 Corte Madera Town Center, El Frenayo. Sign permit application for an El Frenayo Cucina Italiana sign at 223 Corte Madera Town Center. Mr. Boyle, please proceed.
Thank you. Yes. This is a proposal for an illuminated sign, and this is a photo of the existing restaurant. This.
Sorry. I forgot to, yes.
Because I'm the vicinity of my property to town center, I need to recuse myself. And since this is the last thing on the agenda, I would also like to excuse myself from the rest of the meeting, saying that I'm okay with the notes.
Thank you.
There are, there are a couple, a couple other items, actually, but, but that's, that's up here. There are a couple, two other business items.
What are they?
One is, sorry to interject here.
No, there's a participation.
Approving a member for the town hall addition committee.
We should let him leave and we'll appoint him.
There you go. Yeah.
If you think I'm most appropriate, I would accept that.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to correct for the record.
Thank you, Charles. Excuse me. I just talked about it and it went out of my brain. So, anyway.
So, yes, this is an application for illuminated sign and the El Frenayo restaurant, which is located within the town center. The particular restaurant is located in the, the northern end of the town center. This is an existing photo, and I've got a site. There we go. Another existing photo. So this gives us a, my slides, there. Vicinity map showing the location of the restaurant and the proposed sign. The proposed sign, again, will be located on the left side. Dimensions are shown in, in the staff report. It'll be approximately, or will be, two feet, seven inches tall by nine feet wide, a total of 23.8 square feet. The tent, the design guidelines and the Corte Madera municipal code allow a sign as a maximum of 25 square feet. In the staff report, I provide an image of where the sign will be located. The sign will, will be illuminated, like I said before. It will also, as with all signs, it will be connected to a timer and a dimmer, and will have a maximum Kelvin not to exceed 3,500. As you may recall, back, going back a little bit, back in 2015 and 2016, the planning commission approved re-imaging of the town center, and that included all north, south, east and west parts of this, of the town center. And there were some modifications to this northern section here. Nothing in particular to El Frenayo, but the, the area of, as you go back into the center a little bit more is what, part that was, was redone. And all these changes will be cosmetic. There's no proposed changes to the use of the restaurant. And, and what else do I have to say? I think that's pretty much. The, the sign itself will be, consists of two lines of text with the outline of the words El Frenayo and the words Cucina Italiana in black satin color. And I mentioned the total area. And staff is able to make all of the required findings for this application and recommends approval and has submitted a draft resolution if the council, if the commission chooses to approve the application. And Monte Stevens, the manager of the town center, is here, as well as a gentleman representing the sign company, David Ford. And that concludes my presentation.
Fabulous. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Boyle about this sign?
I do.
Yes, Phyllis?
You didn't mention it. Does that mean the current sign is coming down? Or will that also remain instead at a different angle?
No, no signs are to remove, be removed, only a sign added.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
So I have a question. Do you have a picture of what it will look like? The picture from here is on a white background.
Right. I, I don't. That's, that's the best image I have. Perhaps the applicant could describe it in more detail. But it won't, it will not have that back, back, black background. I'm sorry. It won't have that white background. It will be just against the, the stucco wall itself.
It's also not to scale.
It is not to scale. Correct.
And it'll be black lettering?
It says not to scale.
So what I'm seeing is black outlines on the Il Frenayo?
Mm-hmm.
Part of it, and then solid black on the line underneath it. Is that the way it would be?
I'm sorry. One, I see it one more time, please?
So what I'm seeing is that the part that says Il Frenayo?
Correct.
Is sort of an outline in black.
Correct.
And the second line is solid black.
Correct.
Is that the way the sign would look?
Yes, it is. As shown in the last, the last sheet of the plan set, sheet 404.
And so will the Il Frenayo, the outline part, the underneath, or the negative space of that, would that be the tan building background?
Yes.
And, and so would the sign be flat against the building?
Yes, it would be.
Well, it's, in a section, it's projected off, you know.
Or flat against.
So to speak, it, it's an inch space, inch and a half space, and then the three-inch letters.
Right. But what I'm seeing is, like, the sign on the side of the building with the two lights above it.
Mm-hmm.
That's on a piece of cement or something that stands out from the building. Is that correct?
Not much. It's almost flush.
Yes, that's, that's correct. And it is very, it is very thin. So this is, this is a.
But this is flat against the building?
It's a, it's a standoff sign.
Okay.
Yeah. It stands away from the building, not like that cement sign that you're asking about.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Over here. Any questions for the staff?
No.
Okay. All right. I don't either. All right, I don't either. We'll say that there's no further questions of staff, so would you gentlemen care to say what you'd like to say about this sign, please?
Thank you so much. Monte Stevens, property manager, 10th order, Corte Madera. I don't have a lot to add to this sign. I just wanted to make sure that I was available for any questions you may have. It's pretty self-explanatory, the way it's being presented. And I am available for any questions if needed, and I do have the sign company here.
Phyllis, anything for Monte?
No.
Dr. Bundy, anything? All right, Margaret, anything for Monte?
Okay.
Okay. Just in the world of discussion that we've been having here so often, this is about visibility from the parking lot and so forth, the sign, so that people know where it is. What's your, it's just about identification?
Yeah, I think it's about identification, coming off of one of our busiest entrances, coming into Bay Club, there really, you can tell, thank you Phil for this photo, you can tell there's very little to know identity for this location, and they are under their sign requirements. I think it's a nice addition, El Frenayo is an amazing addition to Town Center, they've been here 30-plus years, so, longer than some people that came to visit today. And I think it's tastefully done in their, in their, you know, their design.
Okay.
Peter?
Yes?
Just a comment that you didn't mention, Monte, is it is almost directly across street from the hotel. So I think that they're staying at the hotel, since they do not have food service, will be looking towards the center to see for restaurants.
Yeah, they have, they only have breakfast in the, and after that, they're on their own. So, El Frenayo does not serve breakfast anymore, which is something I wish we could take up here and say, serve breakfast again.
Larry Mendel does a good job with his restaurants, no doubt about it.
They really do.
Yeah.
Always has.
They need employees, so we have to do better with the employee housing in town and get some of that going.
We desperately need a food, a breakfast concept at the shopping center, we're continuously looking at it.
I do have a comment about the identification, if your nose is good enough, you can smell
Yes, and it smells good.
All right. And other than that
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion, yes. Yeah, open and close, there's no, no public comment here, so we'll open it up and say, is there anyone here that would like to comment on this? And other than us chickens, it will say, no, no one is here to do that, and we'll close public comment, and then we'll entertain a motion.
I would like to refer to, now I found it, Resolution Number 19-004, or missing resolution, Phil. In the matter of sign permit, application number PL-2019-004 for an illuminated Il Frenayo Cucino Italiano sign at tenant space number 223 on the north side of the Corte Madera Town Center, APN 024-163-09. I move that we accept the resolution.
All right, that was good, and then a vote.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye, with one caveat.
Sorry, and for the record, Commissioner Lee is recused.
That you get the Crate and Barrel sign to turn off at 11 o'clock.
Which sign?
The Crate and Barrel sign.
Yes, my favorite store, they should return it off.
It does not, it hasn't, maybe they've seen the light, or not the light, but it stays on. Every, it stays on every night, all night. And, other than Mr. Robinson complaining about the clock tower sign last meeting, all is good, so, thank you very much, and
Don't you think you should have brought us a snack, a El Frenayo? Really?
New application required.
Can't get in.
I don't like Mexican food, so I didn't even try to get in.
Great addition, really nice remodel as far as the way they did that.
And all this is on the record?
Yeah, and so, okay, we'll move
As long as you get me in to Il Frenayo, I'm happy.
We'll change our application requirements to require food sampling, as well as materials.
Well, I think that Monte should have at least brought us some margarita pizza to split up between us.
Okay, so, we're all by ourselves here, except for the viewing public, so that means we move directly to the business items.
Well, I'll remind, I'm reading our rules and procedures, 3.2.3, that says, a meeting, no new item will be commenced after 9:30 PM unless otherwise decided upon by a vote of the commission, so.
So that's it? We need a vote to continue?
I move that we continue the meeting until 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Wolf, you're going to discuss this Town Hall expansion and the rules?
Yes, well, and I'm not gonna, I'll start by just saying this is an item that has come out of the last Town Council meeting, which happened on January 15th, in which the Town Manager, Todd Cusmano, and gave a presentation regarding the Town Hall addition project, which is just getting underway, but which a considerable, considerable amount of thought and has gone into on behalf of staff at this point. So, I'm not going to get into the specifics of all of what Todd got into, I think the best is actually to either review the presentation on the archival video that you can, you can now access, and I believe Todd also wrote a, some thoughts on this item out on, by email and on the Town Chronicles, so if you haven't seen that, I'm happy to provide that to you, which gives a lot of background for this item. There have been a series of sort of iterative steps, going back to the summer and even before that with the Town Council, who has provided some direction on this item as well. So, that being said, at the close of the presentation that the Town Manager provided on last Tuesday, there was a discussion and some requests for direction on how to, in the next steps, how to best involve the community in the discussions about the Town Hall addition project, which, at the end of the day, is sort of a and, and the process moving forward, which ultimately will, as was discussed as well, and that presentation will end up in front of, sort of an outline of the process, will end up with a community workshop in front of the Planning Commission, and ultimately have to go through, obviously, our processes and the zoning ordinance for design review at the least, and we'll see if there's anything else that needs to happen as well in front of this commission. So, with that said, the direction from the council was to, that a committee, and it would be formed, or a subcommittee would be formed, made up of two council members, one planning commissioner, and it was left up, it wasn't determined at that point, but some, a couple or few members at large of the community as well, who might be interested in joining this subcommittee, that would also then join with staff as this process, and sort of as the design, and sort of the steps in the design development, sort of go through its processes and iterations, and have, sort of meet with Town Staff and the architecture team that has been hired through the design process, and then potentially even beyond, but
If you want anything from what he wrote?
Thanks, that's okay, I'm not gonna, yeah, so, that being said, we are here tonight, I wanted to put on the agenda for the, to get this sort of kick-started here, a consideration and possible action to appoint one planning commissioner to serve on the Town of Corte Madera Town Hall Expansion Committee. And that would be the action item in front of the commission at this time, so, you know, I leave it to the commission, I know Commissioner, Chairman Chase was at the meeting last Tuesday, and was there for that, and you're welcome to add anything that I may have missed in my report, but other than that, it would be, I think, a yet-to-be-determined time commitment, but likely, especially in the coming months, more than maybe, I would say, for the next six months, fairly frequent meetings, maybe one additional per month, it's an estimate, but there may be, that's probably what I would, my best guess at this point, in terms of the time commitment, but other than that, do you want to say a few words, anybody?
No, I think Margaret was there for the entirety of the meeting.
Yes, sorry.
I wanted to hear just that piece of the meeting, and hear what had to be said by Todd and Mr. Brown and the council going forward, so I was glad that they decided to create a subcommittee and so forth. It is, too bad, it's not clear exactly what the timeframe of this is, in terms of progress, like, we're going to have a budget in this many months, and a basic, you know, DD plan in six months or a year, and then, you know, the CD plan is the goal after two years of
There is all of that information that has been laid out, I think there's a, you know, there's sort of a, some, on the one hand, you know, don't want to get too far ahead of yourselves, obviously, that timeline can change, and part of that, I think the discussion that Todd had with the council was sort of, we need to get some input and get some folks into the process, and move through the process as expeditiously as possible, but at the same time, know there's a variety of steps that need to be done. So there, I think, there will be a kickoff meeting that hasn't been scheduled, where a lot of that information, I think, would be brought to bear.
Fabulous.
And of course, I think also, one of the responsibilities of the appointee would be to report back to this commission at, during the reporting part of the agenda.
Phyllis?
If I may, I would like to suggest that we appoint you, because looking at the makeup of this committee, and it talks about the working group, would be an architect, our usual staff, council members, community members, there's no mention made of someone on this committee, commission, whatever they want to call it, with construction background and knowledge, and that's something I think you could bring to it and be a great help too, so I would like to suggest that Peter represents our commission on that working group, or whatever it's called.
Thank you, Phyllis.
The only other thing I would add is, if your, if the time constraints are that tough, that maybe an alternate could be added if necessary, if Peter could not make it, and Peter would be sure that the alternate had copies of all the paperwork and stuff like that.
An alternate, and the possibility that after a period of time, we consider taking a revote on the process, so that it's not permanent to the end of it, but that, you know, maybe after a year, we say, okay, let's see if somebody else wants to jump in at this point, or reconsider.
There is mention in this thing that I found, that Todd put together, I guess he put it in the Chronicles, about fiscal prudence and understanding that this is a long-term decision, but should be at a low, as low a cost as possible, two to three million dollars. He pretty much outlined this whole thing, it's in different parts of what he is saying, you know, when introducing it to the community.
Yeah, there's been, like I said, there's been some thought, and so there, it's starting from a point of some constraints and parameters, and some assumptions are made, in terms of leading us to the site. Again, his, I think he would say it better than I, so I don't want to, I don't want to put my own thoughts into this, or say something different, but, you know, there's a lot of thinking that went into it, in terms of all, a variety of different factors, that has ultimately led the town to consider this particular site at this, sort of in the parking lot out here, for the most logical, rational, and sort of best place for us to move forward with a Town Hall addition.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that part of the staff is in the firehouse until I read this.
Yeah, I think there's
Does Peter want to do this?
No, I would like to do it, actually, and then see if the impact is what I, or the help that I can offer is appropriate, and then I would say that if I don't feel it is, I reserve the right to come back and ask for someone else to take my place, but that we should then consider an alternate, and would you like to be the alternate, Phyllis, or?
If I can be of help, I have the design background, and I could help with
Or Margaret, or Bob?
Well, that's, I think, that's influential.
Mr. Meeting?
Yeah, you've actually met some meetings you don't like.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure that my background is emergency physician, would really be all that helpful on this particular committee. I did, I did want to ask if, and I certainly support Peter for doing this, does he have to recuse himself when it comes before the Planning Commission?
No, I think, in fact, you know, so I think he would, you know, there would, as far as, Judith, I'll leave that to your, your expertise on this issue, but, but no, there's two council members as well, that would be part of this committee. It's essentially a working group, but obviously, when it comes back, those normal disclosures or any other information that they would, that Peter would, sort of, information he would accumulate through the process should be disclosed in front of the, at the public hearing, or even the workshop, you know, but there is anticipated there'd be an early workshop, you know, to, as we do with any major project, and then the public hearing would happen at a later date.
Plus, you said he would report at our commission meeting, so you would be keeping the rest of the commission up to date.
And it doesn't mean I would agree with the design or where it goes.
No.
It could be that I'm on the other side of the table looking in, and that could very well be
Hey, I've had that opportunity many times, including tonight.
Then, if that's the case, then do we just, do we need a motion or something for this?
Yeah, I think it would be good to, just by motion, appoint the, a commissioner, and then an alternate, an alternate, and if you want to add that this is for a term of one year, or six months, and reserve the right, and the things that you mentioned, please add that.
Okay.
Okay, I will move that we take action to appoint Peter Chase to serve on the Town of Corte Madera Town Hall Expansion Committee.
Okay, and I would add then, that for a term of one year to be reviewed at one year for a revote?
For a term of one year.
Right, and then, that'll just get us out of the thinking phase, then, at which time we revisit this, and that you would be enlisted as an alternate.
Could I just inject something?
Yes.
When I was at the, at the meeting, they talked about phases, it's a three-phase plan, so maybe you could be the chairman, or the art representative for Phase One, and then we'd look into someone else, rather than for a year, they may not do anything for a year.
That makes sense.
So maybe Phase One, and then look at it again at Phase Two.
I will change my motion to say, for a term that follows Phase One of the project.
And coincides with the design process.
And because there may be a time if there's a lot of fighting going on, that your background would be needed, in case someone has a heart attack while arguing.
Let's hope it happens.
So, a second to that?
A second.
I motion all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. As if you have nothing else to do.
So then, you want to speak about the rules and procedures?
Yes, and I, I will start this item by Thanks, Phil. This is actually an item I've had a discussion with Vice Chair Metcalfe about a portion of the rules and procedures, and I apologize for the outset, for not following our own rules and procedures related to how to put an item on the agenda, but I, I will do that going forward. It's been a little bit challenging, given that some, sometimes we haven't actually gotten to the end of some meetings to have that conversation about the next agenda, so, but in any case, Vice Chair Metcalfe and I spoke, there was a desire on her behalf to speak about this particular section of the rules and procedures, in particular, related to expectations for to expectations for meetings with site visits or applicants and what have you, and so I'll at this point turn it over to Vice Chair Metcalf for the discussion. I don't believe there's necessarily any action at this item requested, it's just a discussion at this point, and potentially before.
At the time we worked on, Peter and I worked on, the rules and procedures was because of some, of getting commissioners to actually do visits, et cetera, and we put it in, and we talked about it, we never put it in writing, that it would be to our advantage to go in pairs, in the sense that too many times, especially people who are concerned, more so neighbors, I think, than the actual applicants, opposition neighbors, who want you to come to their home to see the site, come up claiming that certain things were said that were never said, and it was just a way of protecting ourselves, that if we went in a pair, any comments we may have made cannot be used against us later on at the hearings, because it did happen. One of the things when Nicola was on the commission, and also Jennifer, they each got in the habit, and I kind of miss it, that we should have followed through, Nicola would send out an email, "I'm able to go and visit the site and give two or three dates, is there anybody who can join me in any of those dates and set up in advance?" We went together. And it really was helpful, and it gave us a chance even to, after we left the site, to share some information and then, you know, talk about it to other members of the commission. Now we have seen, just recently, applicants claiming that, and I will not name names, just, certain applicants have brought forward the idea that they have spoken to individual members of the commission, and individual members of the commission said things, there either were not meetings, or phone calls, or whatever, and things were not said, and I think if we are going to talk to applicants, many times applicants will contact commissioners and council members before an actual application is submitted. And I, I'm going to give one as an example, and they did nothing wrong, this is not the applicant who came with, someone from Amy's contacted both commission members and council members and wanted to meet with each of us to talk about what the project would be, because it was something entirely different, there would be changes of ordinances. My practice, most often, and I'd say 95% of the time, is to thank them and say, I don't feel I should discuss this until there's an actual application in to discuss, and then if it would be discussed, I would definitely not do it one-on-one, I would be sure another commission member did it. But I just think we put ourselves in an untenable situation in dealing one-on-one, and I would like to encourage all of us, when we meet with applicants and do site visits, we go in pairs, and yes, we are, an uneven amount, and there may be a time when one of us may go twice just as a favor to somebody, or, you know, to try, to do it as a practice, that it is probably the best practice in dealing with these things. And I see Judith kind of listening to me, and I wondered, I'd love some feedback from you, Judith, as the attorney, what you think of this.
Well, before you say...
I was going to at least let your commissioners and stuff, the only, you know, but I will chime in, the only consideration, especially when you do it in pairs, and especially if somebody goes, is Brown Act considerations, and you folks have all had more than adequate training and refresher classes about Brown Act and what you can and can't do, and two's fine, three's too many, and, and, you know, any kind of post, as long as you attend, but you're not discussing the project among even the two, and you're not discussing it with a third, you know, you'd be fine, it's just that if you're going to do that, then all of you need to be, you know, able to make the appropriate disclosures, who met with who, what the discussion was, and be sure that no one's in any risk of overstepping the Brown Act issues.
Good points. Phyllis, are you proposing to put anything into the rules and regs, or this is...
I don't know if it's necessary, and I'd like to know what the other commissioners feel, we could have a practice that's not necessarily in writing, that we make every effort to do this in pairs as much as possible, and I think, as I say, I think it protects the integrity of the commission and the individuals, because people who are not happy have a tendency to put words in others' mouths, or to make claims, and it's happened several times.
Agreed. So if we were trying to codify this, it's simply about following a rule of making every effort, it's a best practice, as you say, and that's almost an advisory...
Yeah. We could write something, I mean, we could see, and I do think we should kind of, I don't want to say pledge, but make every effort to inform each other when we can go to see who could go with us. Bob, I think you also have sent emails out to say you're going, a certain time who would like to go with you. I just think it's helpful, and it's, as I say, better for us individually and for the commission.
Right.
Adam?
No, no, I think the question is to whether or not to actually amend the document at this point, I'm just trying to facilitate sort of where this lands, it's up to the commission, how they want to do it as a pledge, or informal, or try to actually state it in the document. If it is the latter, I would suggest that when we do the full, I think we do, try to do a review every year...
We're skipping this coming year.
Oh, that's right.
We spent too much time on it.
Okay.
No, we could do it, it would be adding a sentence, the type of thing, whenever possible, to go in pairs for site visits and discuss with applicants, it's not going to have a bunch of subheadings and instructions.
No, no, no.
We're not going to ask Theresa to write it, because she dots too many I's and Ts.
I'm trying to sort of, I was trying to incorporate, if others come up, that we only take one actual meeting of the council and one meeting of the planning commission to sort of incorporate all the different edits that...
Well, that's why I said, I think we could have it as a practice, and see how it works.
I can definitely keep an ongoing, sort of, you know, draft red line or something like that, that we can keep...
Not only that, but that on the agenda for, as we get our packet, right, you could put in there and say, encourage, please encourage commissioners to go and, you know, reach out in pairs, there's times that one of us may not be able to do such a thing.
Yeah, I...
Yeah, and the world's not going to come to an end, and you're not going to be able to participate if you have to go by yourself, and, but it's, just to make the effort to do it, and I think we'll be in a better place in the long run.
Okay.
Agreed, you know, it's just, it's a reminder of these things, so having that...
And I think we can do our, on our end, and make sure that applicants are aware that that is a practice of the, of the commission, a best practice of the commission.
If I may ask a question, as long as this is up and Judith is here, as I say, I have had, I know a lot of council members have done this, and I'm not going to sit and name all the different applications, more so than commission members, what is your feeling that you could share with us about meeting with applicants pre-application? I'm very uncomfortable with that idea.
That's really a policy decision for this commission, and I certainly will ask, I think Adam should weigh in on that, but that's certainly something for the council or this commission to set the tone and direction about that. There are other jurisdictions that have actual, you know, rules or restrictions on that, when, who can meet, when they can meet, things like that. The town council has not done that, that certainly in the next time, I mean, from time to time, planning commission meets as a joint session with the council, that may be a topic for a future joint meeting, certainly Adam could pass that along to the town manager, but that's a policy rather than a legal decision.
Yeah, Todd was asking me about what would be, we were having a discussion about something, as he said, and I said, you know, we haven't had this joint meeting, which we're supposed to have every year, one joint meeting, we haven't had it in two years, and he says he was thinking about it, what it, I think should be on our side, I didn't know, I hadn't discussed it with anybody, but I'll mention it to him, I don't, my, but in general, I am asking, I, you know, I'll ask you, Adam, how do you feel about when there's a pre, before there's an actual application in, when an applicant has come, meeting with individual commissioners, and I figure the reason they do it is to get us to lobby you, and I don't want to do that. I just, I have discomfort with it, I may be the only one.
No, no, we, I'm just going to interrupt, Adam, and we've talked about it, and I think that the reason that we've talked about it is that level of discomfort and the fact that the Brown Act simply says, if it doesn't feel right, don't do it, whether it's expressly said in writing, don't do that or not, so to respond to an applicant before the application is complete is wholly inappropriate.
Thank you.
And then if they're, if they want to show something, that's fine, but, you know, you can just sit there and say, my lips are zipped, sorry, guys, it's not real yet, it's not on paper, it's really impossible.
Yeah, and I, and I think we've tried to, one of the ways, the benefits of these workshops, is that usually those projects that they want to talk to somebody about early on are those same projects where we encourage them to have workshops in front of the commission, just to have that conversation in a public meeting in form. It doesn't always, as you know, that's not a, can't require that, but most are, I see the benefit of that direct discussion and interaction with commission members in an early discussion at point.
Yeah, I also feel that when, if they have a community meeting, you know, one that they invite the public, I don't have a problem in going, but I sit there in the audience and I don't say a word, I am there to listen to what's being said and listen to comments of the community, not to be a participant, my opinion is given at a commission meeting, and I think that's where the Nevada council members got in trouble, they went to one of these community meetings and they participated as individuals, and there are times when we give up our individuality if we're going to be commissioners.
So I've, we've both gone by any number of openings at those meetings, and I've said, I'm not going, for the simple fact that it's a presentation that's not real, it's not on paper, it's proposed ideas, and there's a bunch of either nonsense or untrue information flying around, and we should not, I don't feel like I should be there to hear it, I don't want to hear it until it's real, until this man says it's real.
Yeah, but we also went to, when you hired the consultants on putting together that plan, and they had those meetings to get the input, the workshop from the community on what to do on, I want to say Tamalpais, Tamal, what street, the name of the street?
Tamal Vista.
Tamal Vista, that Peter and I both went, and when they divided us into groups, made sure we were in different groups, and we sat there and took in, in public in the presentation.
So it's, let me interrupt, it's 10:03, and we have to decide whether we're going to continue through routine and other matters at this point.
The minutes, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to continue, only because we have minutes going back to November that we keep on passing over each month, and I think we can, unless somebody has changes, that we could vote on these and finally get these minutes official.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, until 10?
Yeah, until 10.
All right, motion passes.
10:15.
Well, I think it's 10 that we have...
10:30 or 10:15?
10:30, we have to do 10:30?
No.
No, to 10.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, 10:30, thank you.
Unanimous.
Yeah, 10:30, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I still have 9:30 in my brain.
I think it does have to be, let me...
A half-hour intervals.
No, no, but also unanimous, actually, so let me hold on.
Only the second one.
Let me, oh, the second one, okay, I will read again.
Okay.
We are in section 3.2.3.
Majority of vote.
Majority vote is required to extend the meeting for a half-hour period beyond 10:00 PM.
All right, so we're in a majority.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So why don't we move on to whatever the next agenda is?
Margaret, would you be willing to comment on the commission, the council meeting?
Sure. A lot of it had to do with the town hall edition. I thought it was interesting, the three-phase plan, the first phase was to basically bring the buildings up to code.
That's nice.
And right now, they're having, they have issues with, the special issues that aren't up to code is the air quality and the ventilation there, and then they also said that space was a critical issue, and so, is that wrong?
No, I, when you, I should have asked for clarification before, I wasn't, I'm not familiar with actually the three phases, so I assumed that it was, had to do with actual project, that's not my understanding of, but I don't have the record or video in front of me, so to clarify that.
Oh, okay. And part of the first phase, they wanted to increase the space of the public permit counter and take the staff out of the firehouse, that was the pressing issues, and then the second pay, phase would be the renovation downstairs in different retrofits, and downstairs, there would be a renovation, hoping to put in a community amenity, and then the third phase would be upstairs...
Margaret, is your, sorry, is your mic on, I'm just, is your mic on, sorry?
Hello? Would be a renovation upstairs, including this council chamber, the cost, they're looking at $2 to $3 million, and the people from the council that are going to be in this working group are Mr. Beckman and Mr. Andrews. They're going to also plan several community sessions before the whole thing gets going. Todd talked about the townwide staffing issues, right now there are 30.5 employees plus contract people, and part of the plan to, in their staffing issues, they're considering the merging with other jurisdictions, and they formed this JPA, the Joint Public Agencies, they saved $1 million and have provided better services and enhanced services to the community, as far as the general municipal elections ordinance that was adopted and passed unanimously, and then there was a very interesting update on all the public works projects that are going on, I don't know if you want me to go through some of them or not.
No, I don't think so.
No, okay. That was it.
All right, yeah, that's fine, I think that for general interest, people might want to go online and look at the commentary or the discussion about Casa Buena Drive project and what's being proposed there, I think that's an important aspect of issues that we've addressed in the past, and that they're going to try some stuff over there and take a look at it, it's sort of adjunct to the meeting, but the Casa Buena thing is going to cause some disruption, and it's important to be aware of it.
That's the thing that Glenda wrote about.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you, that's really all you want to say about the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fabulous. Adam, do you want anything, add anything about that meeting?
No, I think, I'll let that, should say all without all.
Anything else you want to add?
Not, no, not this time.
Okay, so we've got a big item next time?
Still, yep, still tentative, tentative agenda items, we have three weeks before the next meeting, and we should have a better sense by the end of this week.
May I ask Adam a question, please, on this?
Yeah.
I mean, I am, I don't want you to think I'm opposed to the project when I ask about it, but you and I have discussed this before, whether or not it's state law about if you want an ADU, you have to occupy, own and occupy one of them, is...
That's a question that you've got to take offline somewhere else and...
No, I want to be sure that when you... No, I want to be sure that when you bring this to us, you have an answer on what are the rules in which to have an ADU, that we don't work in the dark. That's all I'm asking for.
And I'm happy, just as a reminder, I've sent a couple of emails. If you want to have a early, sort of, briefing on the application, which is obviously a public document, and some of the, I'm happy to do that with any commissioner who wants a earlier look than when the staff report comes out.
Okay.
No, but I think it's important that we know, because some say it could be a rental, and some say it cannot be.
No, that was what we talked about last time, and I think that's part of the...
Presentation, be sure it is.
Yes, yeah, right. So then we get to some minutes here. We have November 13th, 2018. Is there a...
May I make a motion, if no one has a problem with any of these minutes, that we approve all three minutes in one motion? Is that possible?
I would think so, unless somebody has some...
If no one has any changes, can I do that? Okay, well, since not hearing any objections, I would, are there any recusals? Oh, wait, maybe, well, he isn't here anyway, it would be Charles, but...
November 13th is fine.
He had to recuse himself from the dog food.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, it was the dog, and he isn't here anyway to vote, so there would be a problem. Okay, okay. I would like to move the approval of the minutes from November 13, 2018, November 27, 2018, and January 8, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.